All right, if we could have everybody find their seats. We've got a few presentations tonight. So we're going to call this part of our meeting to order for our presentations here at 5:00 P. M. And we're going to first invite up the Mission Springs Water District to give us a presentation. I'm assuming it's on water.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Mattis, and good afternoon, members of the council and staff. I am here tonight. My name is Marion Champion, and I'm the Assistant General Manager at Mission Springs Water District. I'm joined here with one of our board members, Russ Martin, our General Manager, Brian Macy, and our Public Affairs Specialist, April Scott. Today, I'm here to talk to you about a mailer that we sent out earlier this month, and it is about our Prop 218 process. Mission Springs Water District has performed a long-range financial master plan and a cost of service study designed to look at our revenues looking into the future. And one of the things that we have to do is make sure that we're going to operate in a fiscally responsible manner and that we're here for generations to come. You will see that in this Prop 218, it details out a rate adjustment, a proposed rate adjustment. And there are several drivers for that rate adjustment. Those five drivers include, one, inflation. It's no secret that here regionally, we've had a very high inflationary rate. Regionally, we're looking at about a 27% increase in inflation. And so that inflation really impacts everything that we do at the Water District, from the paper that we purchase for our office supplies, but more importantly, it also impacts our sludge hauling, it impacts our chlorination and our disinfectant needs, and it even impacts our staffing and our ability to do our business. Second, we have aging infrastructure. We're over 70 years old, and we have pipe in the ground that is 70 years old. And so we need to be looking and being proactive. It's kind of like your car. If you have a leaky strut and you decide you're not going to pay attention to it, before you know it, you're replacing the whole axle. So for us, we're looking at this proactively, and we've done a long-range plan, how we are going to continue to move forward with projects, including things like moving some of the piping that we have in rear yard easements, moving those to the front yard and making them more accessible. So we have a long list of projects that we have for improvements so that we can maintain our current service. Also, we've got conservation mandates. It's no secret that here in California, we're practicing conservation as a way of life. And this has come from the legislature down to the local levels. So we are looking at needing to decrease the amount of water that each of our consumers are using each day. And that will come at a price, and we will have to make sure that we're making amends and that we're planning for that. Also, it's no secret that we have water quality. We are very, very passionate about our groundwater here and our award-winning water. And, you know, the state has come out with some new mandates, including the Chromium 6 mandate. We have done some work in that area, but we will have to continue to do more work on Chromium 6. So we'll need to take funds that have already been collected towards Chromium 6 and adding additional funds so that we can make sure that we are providing good, safe, healthy water in the future. And lastly, of course, you guys know that there's no secret, we are very passionate about our groundwater management, making sure that we're getting septic systems out and that we're being very proactively managing the water within our basin here so that we do have those water resources for the future. So you might be asking, what is this impact? What does this look like to consumers? So our financial consultant came back and told us that we needed to look, from a revenue perspective, we needed to look at about 9% on our water side and about 7% on our sewer side. So to give you some perspective of what that actually means, for a residential customer using 13 CCF, that's about our average usage for a customer, that's about $3.44 per month on the water side. On the sewer side, that looks to be about $3.59. So that's really about $7.03 total increase. For many of us, that's one cup of Starbucks. But we also recognize for some of our customers, $7 is a lot of money to come up with every month. And so one of the things that our board is looking at doing is increasing our Help to Others program. So for those of you who are not familiar with that program, it's a water rate assistance program in which if an income-qualified customer would like to apply, they can receive an annual amount of, right now, $100 that they can use to offset their water rates and their water costs. We're looking at increasing that to $150 annually. And it's a very generous program. It's run through the SoCal United Way. They're the ones who actually administer the program for the district. We do not use ratepayer funds to fund this program. Instead, we use things like funds from our leasing agreements for like our solar tower, or, excuse me, our telephone towers, our mobile towers. So we're not taking ratepayer funds, but we're looking for other places. But that is, right now, on the books, that we're looking at increasing that total amount. Again, you know, we're living up to our transparency. One of the reasons I'm here today is to really get the word out. We mailed this mailer out earlier this month to all of our customers and all of the property owners within our service area, so they should have received a copy of this. It's also on our website. We've been doing social media outreach. And we're also hosting four community meetings. We've already hosted two, one at the senior center and one at the library. Tonight, in about 45 minutes, I'll be hosting another one at Mission Springs. And then next week, we will be up at Mission Lakes Country Club. In addition to these MSWD-sponsored community events, we are also going out to different clubs, local clubs, like the Rotary, the Women's Club, and any, and Skyborne, and some of the different HOAs. If anyone has or a request and they'd like us to come to one of their community events and either have an informational table or to do a presentation similar to what I'm doing tonight, please let them know that they can reach out. My contact information is on the sheet, and I have left extra ones here in the chambers in case anybody would like one of those. This has not been done in a vacuum. I want you to know that we are trying to be as transparent as possible. We've made every effort to go out into the community. The actual amounts that we are looking at, the 7 and 9%, were actually recommendations from community members. Earlier this summer, we did a clear committee, we assembled a clear committee from residents within the community who applied to be on the committee. And we went through all of the financials. We looked at, what is the status quo if we do nothing? What is it if we do a 5%? What if we do a 6%? And what happens to our reserves and our ability to, our reserves and also our debt ratio coverage? And this is how we came up with those numbers, was with that input from those community members. And they have been fantastic. They've been coming to our board meetings, they've been coming to our community meetings, and they have been some of our best advocates because not only is MSWD passionate about our water, our community members are passionate as well. And so again, that is all I have for tonight. If anybody would like more information, if they want to download a digital copy of this, it's available on our website at mswd.org/rates. Again, this information is visible on our website, easy to find. And we would love to talk to anyone who would like to request a meeting, or if you just have questions, give us a call because we'd be happy to talk to you.
We appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Marion? We have a comment.
Yes. I've been assigned by the mayor to be a liaison to MSWD, and I usually don't go to your workshops, but I did go to your workshop this time. And I just wanted to say, you said that real quick, but she did talk about long-range plans, conservation mandates, and water quality. And I want to quote a person, kind of like quota, from Director Huff. And during that meeting, the whole board was very, very conscious about the constituents that they served. So I asked you, go to the website, get what she said, it's there. Go to the website and find out about the other forums that are happening, because if you don't know, that's your problem, because she's doing a lot to let you know. And with the meetings, when I attended the meeting, I was the only one. Don't say you don't know.
Any comments or questions? We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on our list is a Palm Springs International Airport Economic Impact Study presentation, and Jake's here to give that to us. Welcome back.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Mattis, as well as members of the council, Airport Commissioner Boss. It's great to be with you speaking tonight, and I'm honored to tell you a little bit about some of our updates that we'll be sharing with you this evening. I first want to start with a quick refresher. It has probably been a little while since you and maybe the public have seen our route map. Thirty-two non-stop destinations in season, some already back after summer, and more coming right now through the winter as well. Los Angeles, SFO, Minneapolis, Chicago, all back this month. Our cross-country flights to the East Coast, including some new ones this season, will be back very soon. More on those in just a minute. But we always want to remind you as well, your journey does not have to stop with these 32 destinations. You can get to over 300 one-stop destinations, anywhere in the world, really, from PSP, one quick and easy one-stop connection. So you can start at PSP and truly reach the world. The best part is you can skip the hours of driving on the 10 West to our larger, busier airport neighbors. We're seeing a surge in passenger numbers right now and a big growth streak. You'll see our 11 carriers there with the aircraft tails. And last year, over 3.2 million total passengers, about what we've seen the last two years. However, this year, year-to-date, we are up from that 10% already. The records do not stop coming. Five record months so far this year, all of them, year-over-year growth so far. March 2025, our busiest month ever, nearly half a million passengers that month alone through PSP. Our scheduled seats are also up every month through the end of this year. So 2024 is looking very good at PSP. Of course, a big question out there, will our Canadian friends be returning this winter? And what level of impact should we expect? I am here to tell you tonight, Canadian service remains strong through the end of this year at PSP, only fractional reductions in daily flights compared to last year. So all destinations north of the border are returning this season, slight trimming on the schedules, but on average, it is less than one flight fewer per day through December. And you can see the growth here. It is our domestic routes this year more than offsetting any slight dips in our Canadian travel. All right. So the real reason we are here tonight, all of those passengers certainly add up, and they have a big economic impact on our community. We recently conducted an economic impact study setting out to measure that. And the results are in, confirming what many of us in this room already know, that PSP is more than just a gateway to our desert destination, it is a crucial economic engine fueling growth throughout the Coachella Valley and across the region. We support local jobs, drive visitor spending, and importantly, return hundreds of millions of dollars in tax revenue to fund our community's services. So as demand continues to rise at the airport, PSP's role in our regional economy is growing as well. This study puts real numbers behind that story. We're excited to share it with you. So how do we measure PSP's economic impact? Well, the study was conducted by the airport, it was completed by our consultant, and we looked at a number of things. Airport operations, so the jobs, the wages, the revenue from airlines, TSA, concessions, and other services that we offer at PSP. Also looked at visitor spending, the money that people who flew through PSP went on to spend at hotels, restaurants, shops, and attractions throughout the valley. We looked at the economic impact of our capital improvements, the airport construction and the upgrades that we're working on right now, as well as the money behind all of that employment that we support, the wages being paid across those multiple sectors. And then lastly, the taxes generated for governments from local all the way up through federal. This report looks at actual data from fiscal year 2024, last year, as well as 10-year projections through 2034 for our upcoming capital improvements as well. So here are the results. According to the study, PSP's total economic impact adds up to over $2.5 billion just last year alone. That $2.5 billion is the economic activity generated across aviation, hospitality, and other services, really all encompassing everything that the airport touches. We found that more than 18,000 jobs are supported by the airport. That includes the nearly 5,000 people who work onsite at the airport every day, but it also includes stretching beyond our gates and into our communities, the local businesses, the tourism workers, jobs who have people to serve because those people flew through PSP and came here through our airport. All of those workers we support were paid $864 million in labor income last year. We found that over $1.1 billion was spent by PSP travelers directly tied to people who flew through PSP, booking those hotels, dining, shopping, et cetera. PSP generated $382 million in tax revenue for local, county, state, and federal governments supporting public safety, community improvements, services and programs that we all rely on. And importantly, 98% of those economic benefits stay right here within our local communities, regionally within Riverside County, with the majority share staying here in the Coachella Valley. That is crucial because it means that nearly every dollar that is spent at PSP circulates back into our local economy, supporting those public services, infrastructure, and thousands of workers across tourism, hospitality, and beyond. Okay, but we also looked at the economic impact of our capital improvements over the next 10 years, 2025 through 2034, with plans for the airport to grow, as you've heard, including a new concourse in Phase 1 of a terminal expansion, seven new gates to the north there, that consolidated rental car center adjacent to baggage claim, and a federal inspection station that will expand our international capabilities. So what is the economic impact these projects will have? Over the next 10 years, 9,800 jobs will be created as a result of those projects, nearly 1,000 jobs a year. $1.8 billion in future economic impact, $641 million in future wages, labor income being paid thanks to these projects, and we'll be delivering $253 million in additional new tax revenue over the next 10 years of airport growth. So as you've seen, the numbers are big, the impact is deeply local. PSP is not just connecting travelers, we are fueling opportunities here in the Coachella Valley. And as PSP continues to grow, we are creating those jobs across industries. Local businesses are benefiting from every passenger who walks through our doors. Tax revenue flows back into our cities, funding those services, infrastructure, and improving quality of life for our residents. And our facilities and infrastructure will continue to evolve to meet that demand so that PSP can continue to serve the region and bring these economic benefits for decades to come. So when you fly PSP, not LAX or Ontario, you are creating jobs, contributing to our local economy, but it also is demonstrating demand here in our community and at our airport, which helps us make the case to airlines for additional air service, adding new non-stop destinations, and taking seasonal routes to year-round. We're always advocating for more service to better connect our travelers, and our community actually using PSP helps us significantly strengthen our case to the airlines to expand that service ultimately. Makes a big difference. Really quickly, before I wrap up, some other updates to leave you with here. Five new routes coming this season. Newark on United is our third nonstop to the New York metro area, joining Alaska and Delta to JFK this year. This starts in December. We just announced new seasonal service to Charlotte on American Airlines, not only adding another great east-west connection, but also giving access to a powerful hub connecting us to the East Coast, the Midwest, and even international destinations. Austin is now back on the route map, both on Southwest and Delta, double duty there starting up this fall. And Santa Rosa is back now on Alaska Airlines. This begins in October. So five new routes that we're announcing and excited to have them all. If you've been through our terminal recently, it's not just the air service you see us improving, you're seeing changes to our concessions as well. All new concessions are now open. Seven new restaurants, you can go and eat there today. Six new shops with duty-free still on the way. The goal of the concessions program was to really bring that local feel into the airport so you can feel the authentic Coachella Valley experience from the moment you take off or right before you depart. And we invite the community to come to the airport and see all of our exciting changes yourself. You don't have to be flying to do it. You can use our free Stay and Play visitor pass online, flypsp.com/stayandplay. And you can register that, get your pass, and bring your guests all the way to the gate before they depart. Go greet your friends at the gate as they arrive, making those special memories and spending time at PSP. We'd love to have you and show you what has been going on. Some other quick improvements. Iconic mid-century modern seating has returned curbside. These were original to the 1966 Donald Wexler Terminal. We worked with Wexler's son, Gary Wexler, to recreate them exactly. A piece of PSP's mid-century modern history and charm now restored. People have been loving it. And one of our latest projects, we are installing 80 new EV chargers in Parking Lot B, just steps from the terminal. So some parking impacts are expected this fall. But once this is complete, it is a major sustainability win for PSP. It will be one of the largest airport charging arrays in Southern California, only behind the region's largest hubs, LAX and San Diego. We have a lot of projects coming down the line, so if you're wondering about it, chances are we're already working on it. Progress PSP is our latest launch. It is the one-stop spot to learn about all of the projects that we have underway, the dozens of airport improvements we are already working on. Importantly, none of these are funded by local taxpayers. We do not use local taxpayer dollars at the airport to fund our improvements. We're fueled by our travelers. So every time you park at the airport, book a flight, buy a cup of coffee, or eat at our restaurants, you're helping us to improve the PSP experience. We are working hard over there every day, and PSP is improving every day. So we wanted to show the public what we're working on, not only when it's completed, but while it's in the works as well. You can log on, progresspsp.com. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Jake. Great report. Commissioner Boss, would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir. Jake, thank you for coming here. When I sit on the Airport Commission representing our city, and when he did this, I was just really excited to hear all the information on this and the impact of that. And it's just such, it really ties in with our economic development goals for our strategic plan with some of the things that they're doing and what we want to do, especially down by the freeway and other parts, there's really a great tie-in. But I don't think a lot of the people, you know, the public, they see the airport, they know about the airport, and they don't really realize the economic impact, the jobs, the productions and things that it does. And frankly, just the simple use of it. I mean, you know, there were many times, many of us, like me, I was always going to Ontario, and I found these options now are coming more and more now that I probably 90% of the time, I'm flying out of Palm Springs versus elsewhere just because they have the additional flights. And so I wanted to make sure that when we set this up, you know, that the public had the opportunity to hear all that and to see the great benefit that the airport is and how well the staff there are doing too. That's it.
Well, I haven't flown a lot, but I did fly this year with my family, and we went out of Palm Springs after adding up what the car rental was going to be in Ontario, and, or not the car rental, but the car in the parking. And driving out there with the gas, it was almost a wash. So it was, it was great to run, fly out of Palm Springs. You could see how busy it is. We still had to walk out onto the tarmac and walk up a plane, so that new concourse that you guys are going to build is going to be awesome. We've always had a great partnership with the Palm Springs Airport, and I'm looking forward to all your improvements. Thank you for keeping us informed. Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, thanks, Jake. I will second that, and as Dirk said, I serve on the visitor at Palm Springs Board, which oversees all of the tourism in the valley. PSP is the biggest economic driver, standalone economic driver for tourism in the valley. And tourism is the number-one economic driver in the entire valley. So you are a key component, and it really is important for the multiplier reasons. You had a lot of great data there. I, like you, I used to drive to Ontario, and then I started adding up what the cost of gas and parking there was versus flying out here. And even though flights here are, sometimes tend to be a little bit more expensive depending on the destination, it beats driving the 10 and paying the parking and everything else that's down there. So I'm looking forward to seeing the improvements, and there's some great stuff coming in, and it's really going to be a great, a much bigger economic engine for us once they get all of this done. So good work.
Mr. Pitts, Ms. Pye, anything?
No. I can't say it better than you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks.
All right. So it is an honor that we're going to have our police chief come on up, and he's going to have a badge ceremony for a few new officers.
So great presentations by Mission Springs Water District and PSP, but this is going to be the best presentation of the night for everybody, so I've got to say. So this is one of those things, as a chief, that I'm just honored and excited to be able to do, and that's to welcome new folks to the police, not only the Police Department family, but the City of Desert Hot Springs family. And unlike other cities, we get this opportunity where we actually get to bring them up and you get to meet them in person. You're not going to find that in LA or San Diego or Riverside or anything like that. So it's one of those things that makes us unique and makes us special here. So I'm really excited. I'm going to start with a community service officer, Maximiliano Bersera. So Max, if you'll come up here for a sec. And I know with Max, come around on this side, Max. Let me stand here. And so raise your hands in the family for me. So with Max, we have his mom, Dana, his dad, Francisco, his girlfriend, Paloma, and Trish, his aunt. Where's Trish at? There she is, right in front of me. So little background on Maximiliano Bersera. Goggles on here. So please welcome new community service officer, Maximiliano Bersera. Max was born and raised in Redondo Beach, California, where he graduated from Redondo Union High School. Max was the captain of the rugby team all four years he attended high school. Max is grateful for the opportunity to join the Desert Hot Springs Police Department. He is proud and excited to start his law enforcement career with the City of Desert Hot Springs in serving the community. A little bit more on Max, his, is Chris your cousin? Kind of sudden. Chris Tooth, which is a name a lot of us recognize, used to work. So is the one that turned Max on to Desert Hot Springs and got him over here to us. Max, I know Max's ultimate goal is to become a sworn police officer. It's going to be here in Desert Hot Springs, he's not going to go anywhere else. And this is that path to get him there. We've had, we've had a few officers that have taken that path, and it's been very successful, and we're looking forward to that. So Max, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I should have said this before I started, just so you know, a couple of things for time, and I know, I know the folks that we're, I'm introducing here today are going to be really upset about this, but I want there to be enough time after we're done here for folks to come up with their family and take photos and stuff. And we do have a city council meeting that starts at 6 o'clock. So normally, we would have the individual say a few words to the audience. And if something's really chomping at the bit to do it, we'll make the time for you, but otherwise, I'm going to give you a break on that tonight so that you can do photos with the family and everything like that.
Chief?
Yes.
Take your time.
Okay. Well, Max, then you got to come back up here for a second. Come on back up. And you get to say a couple of words here.
How are you guys doing? I just want to thank my family for showing up today, and I really appreciate everyone with a warm welcome, and I'm very excited to start my career here with Desert Hot Springs.
Next, I would like Monica Cifuentes, where are you at, Monica? Come on up. And I would like June Casey to join us up here. So Monica is our newest dispatcher. Monica completes us to make us full staffed in our dispatch center, which is fantastic. And for those of you that don't know June, June is our dispatch manager. So I wanted June just to come up here and stuff like that, but let me introduce. And so with Monica here today, and raise your hands again, we got Sal, her husband. Welcome. It's Toby, it's Toby, right? Yep, Toby and Miles, her children, welcome. Yolanda, her mom, in the back there, Victor, her dad. Very good. And Natalie, I can't read my writing, her sister. Where's Natalie at? All right, Natalie, welcome. All right. So for Monica, so please welcome new police dispatcher, Monica Cifuentes. Monica was born and raised in Palm Springs and has lived in Coachella Valley her entire life. She is privileged to serve the community that she has always called home. Monica previously worked at Desert Regional Medical Center. Well, she developed strong communication and multitasking skills that she is excited to carry into this chapter of her career. Becoming a police dispatcher is truly a dream come true, not just for Monica, but for her family as well. She is a wife and proud mother of two, and their love and support continue to inspire her each day. Monica is grateful for this opportunity to serve the residents of Desert Hot Springs, and welcome, Monica.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me here today. I am so excited to be your first line of response for any emergency services, and I just want to thank all my family for letting me have this opportunity and the city of Desert Hot Springs and the Police Department. Thank you so much.
So next, I don't remember the last time, I don't remember if anybody hears last time, that we're soaring in five new police officers at one time. So this is really exciting for So this is really exciting for us as a department, as a community. And a lot of these officers, just like with Monica and Maximiliano, they're born and raised here and from Coachella Valley and stuff. So we're really getting some local, homegrown talent that are staying here and being part of the team here. So what we'll do is I'm going to bring up each officer, and if they have somebody besides me that's going to pin their badge on them, we're going to do that. And then once I've introduced all of them, then we'll do swearing in all of them at the same time, right? Okay. So first, let's bring up Officer Adrian Olivas Ortega. So with Officer Ortega here today is his mom, Anna. Welcome. His dad, Ramon, and his girlfriend, Daisy. So welcome. So please welcome Police Officer Adrian Olivas Ortega. Adrian was born in Indio and raised in Palm Desert. Officer Ortega graduated from the California State University San Bernardino with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice in 2021. He attended the Basic Modular Academy at College of the Desert for modulators two or two and three. And in August of 2024, Officer Ortega graduated from modular one at the Ben Clark Training Center with Class 01-023. He earned the top academic award and placed second overall in his class. After graduating from the academy, Officer Ortega worked with the 29 Palms Band of Mission Indians as a public safety officer. In his spare time, he enjoys playing soccer, going to the gym, and spending quality of time with family and friends. Officer Ortega is very grateful for the opportunity to serve the community, and we are thrilled to have him. So congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Do this without poking you, okay? Are you good, sir? I'll just put it in the bottom, and then you can clasp it. Oh, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So it don't fall off on you. All right. Next is Officer Enrique Ramirez. And then let's see, with Officer Ramirez today is his wife, Brandy. Where you at, Brandy? And I think Brandy's going to pin you. So Brandy, why don't you come on up here? Right around this side. All right, so please welcome Officer Enrique Ramirez. Officer Ramirez is a proud husband and father who values family above all else. He served, excuse me. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 2013 to 2019, an experience that shaped his discipline, work ethic, and commitment to service. After his military career, Officer Ramirez continued that path by working for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. During his spare time, Officer Ramirez spends quality of time with his kids and wife, whether it's at the gym, firing up the barbecue, or just relaxing and making memories together. Officer Ramirez is excited for the opportunity to work with the Desert Hot Springs Police Department and looks forward to learning, growing, and continuing to serve this community with pride. So congratulations, Officer Ramirez. See, it's not as easy as it looks, right? All right. And I forgot, but you're going to come up, but you come up first. Say a few words.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here. And thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to working with all you guys. If you guys see me, feel free to wave, and let's stay hydrated. Thank you, guys. How's it going, everybody? Officer Olivas here. I just wanted to say thank you for the City of Desert Hot Springs for giving me the opportunity, and I'm very grateful. I thank you to my family and friends who are here to support me, and I can't wait to get out there and help in any way I can. Thank you, guys.
All right, Officer Amanda Green. Amanda, come on up. And then Amanda's got several of her kids here, but Saif? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Saif.
Saif? Where you at? Come on up. Amanda's son is going to do the pinning for her. So please welcome Police Officer Amanda Green. Officer Green is proud to serve as a police officer with the Desert Hot Springs Police Department. She brings over 12 years of experience in corrections with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and has built her career on a strong foundation of dedication and service. Officer Green holds a degree in Administration of Justice and Political Science as well as certifications in Crime Scene Investigation and Corrections. She is a graduate of the Ben Clark Modular Academy, Class 23. Joining the City of Desert Hot Springs marks an exciting new chapter in her law enforcement career, and she looks forward to making a positive impact in the community she now serves. And then besides her son up here, we've got Liliana. Where you at, her daughter? Leah. Amanda. And Nava. Sorry if I messed up those names. All right, so... Got it on there? All right, congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the City of Desert Hot Springs for allowing me to take the next step in my career. It's been a long journey, but I'm excited to be here. So I hope you guys are excited to have me. Thank you.
And we're glad Amanda made it today. I think she had a septic problem this morning with her septic line. So we're glad you got that fixed and were able to join us tonight. All right. Officer Jordan Claussen, come on up. Let's see, with Jordan here today is his mom, Dawn. All right, his dad, Darryl, welcome. And Yuma, pronounce the name again for me. Yumalay. His girlfriend, welcome. So Officer Jordan Claussen, please welcome new Police Officer Jordan Claussen. Officer Claussen was born in Palm Springs and raised in Desert Hot Springs. Yeah, we can, we can clap for that, absolutely. He attended and graduated from the Riverside County Sheriff's Modular Academy in May 2023. Officer Claussen previously worked as a correctional deputy for the Riverside County Sheriff's Office. You see that the trend here is that we're stealing folks from Riverside County Sheriff's and San Bernardino County, so, and we're going to continue to do that. Officer Claussen has always had an interest in public service, spending three years as an explorer, and an additional year as a police cadet with Cathedral City. So we're stealing from Cathedral City also. Officer Claussen is grateful for the opportunity to serve his community and the residents of Desert Hot Springs. So congratulations, Officer Claussen. All right, say a few words, please.
How's it going, everybody? I'd like to thank the City of Desert Hot Springs for giving me this opportunity. I've been a resident here for a part of all my life, so it's a pleasure to serve the city that I was raised in. I look forward to meeting all of you on the street.
All right, and last for tonight, but certainly not least, is Officer Lydia Zavala. Officer Zavala, come on up. All right, and then Alyssa. Lydia's cousin is going to do the pinning, so Alyssa, come on up, please. And then also with Officer Zavala here today, we've got her mom, Rena, and her dad, Sergio. And then we got Alyssa here. So here we go. So please welcome new Police Officer Lydia Zavala. A Coachella Valley native, she was born and raised in the community. She now has the honor of serving. Officer Zavala comes from a proud law enforcement family and brings with her a deep-rooted commitment of public service. She pursued her studies at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, where she majored in political science, cultivating a thoughtful understanding of public service. She also has a background in healthcare, where she further demonstrated her commitment to the well-being of others. Having successfully completed her police academy training at San Bernardino Valley College, she is now poised to bring her passion, integrity, and unwavering dedication to service in her new role. As a Hispanic woman in law enforcement, Officer Zavala is not only continuing her family's legacy of service, but also serving as a powerful example of representation and leadership in our community. We are honored to have her on board and look forward to the impact she will have in the City of Desert Hot Springs. So welcome, Officer Zavala.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming, and I just want to say thank you for my family for showing up, and also thank you for the community for allowing me to serve you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So one of the honors I have as a city clerk is being able to administer the oath. With that being said, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Congratulations to each of you.
Okay, well, like I said at the beginning, this is a really exciting time for me as a chief. These folks behind me, this is the future of the Police Department, and this is a great group of folks that we have here. They went through a really strenuous background process, and then they had to sit through a final interview with me. And I guarantee you, it wasn't easy. They were asked some tough questions, and these folks rose to the occasion, and they're going to be ambassadors for this Police Department in this city. So I'm really thrilled to have them here with us and joining us. So congratulations to all of you for the family. Once we get done here, then come on up, and we'll have some time. We've got 15 minutes, so that's perfect. We'll take some photos and stuff like that. I appreciate everybody coming out today, for the officers for coming in, for the family and friends and residents. There's folks in the audience here that, that are residents that are interested in, in playing a part, and are integral into our community and how the Police Department operates, and they take the time to come out here also. So I thank you all for coming out here today to celebrate today and to welcome these new folks, not only these officers, but CSO Maximilio and dispatcher Cifuentes. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you all very much.
Before we end, real quick, we're going, before we recess, on behalf of the City of Desert Hot Springs, the City Council, and everybody you serve, please be safe out there, and thank you for what you're doing for us. All right, we'll, we'll recess for 15 minutes, and you can take all the pictures you like. We're going to get started for our 6:00 PM meeting. Gerald, you ready? Awesome. We're going to call to order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting in the City Council, and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pitts.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Councilmember Voss.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gardner.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present.
Invocations now will be given by Mayor Protem Gary Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is going to be a little bit unorthodox, and I thank Councilmember Pye and the mayor for giving me the opportunity to indulge me for just a moment. When I asked if I could do this, it was before the horrific shootings at the high school in Colorado and the college in Utah, and before the threats at our own schools this last week. And I had wanted to say this because some of our city's staff were facing a lot of unruly and ugly threats on social media, simply for doing their job in a way that the posters disagreed with. And I was hoping to appeal, as Abraham Lincoln once said, "to the better angels of our nature." And it was, in my mind, a very appropriate thing for what our staff had undergone at the time. Sadly, it's even more relevant after what happened across our country this last week. Some of you may know, I'm originally from Utah. I was raised in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which most of you will know as the Mormons. And although I've left the church, I still find much value in some of their teachings. And the leader of their church, Russell Nelson, last week celebrated his 101st birthday. And in reflecting on those years lived, he said, quote, "I believe we are all children of a loving God, but no matter your religion or your spirituality, recognizing the underlying truth beneath this belief, that we all deserve dignity, is liberating. It brings emotional, mental, and spiritual equilibrium. And the more you embrace it, the more your anxiety and fear about the future will decrease. Love your neighbor. Treat them with compassion and respect. A century of experience has taught me this with certainty. Anger never persuades. Hostility never heals. And contention never leads to lasting solutions. Too much of today's public discourse, especially online, fosters enmity instead of empathy." Those of us up here on the dais who are in a position of leadership need to step up and say, "Stop." I applaud and agree with the governor of Utah, Spencer Cox, who acknowledged the need to disagree better. At a press conference after the shooting up there, he said, "Our nation is broken." For those who celebrated even a little bit at the news of the shooting, and I'll add to those who now call for vengeance for anyone who disagrees with them, I would beg you, look in the mirror and see if you can still find that better angel somewhere in there. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lacing your hand over your heart, join me in pledging to our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move to the approval of our agenda. At this time, we're going to take the consent calendar items. Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on any items that are on the consent calendars, items five through 13? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda and the consent calendar in whole.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Voss, second by Mayor Protem. Wait for it to come up on the screen, and then we will vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to public comment. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during the public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during public comments. First comment I have is Sandra Munoz.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I had everything all written out, and something took my piece of paper, and I couldn't find it. I was at a meeting a couple of years ago, and they were bringing up the stoplight that's supposed to be on Palm and Park Lane, right by the public library. They were saying it was 600,000. Why is it still not up there? Is that something that council can please look into before we have some fatalities down there? You've got a public library, you've got public mental health, you have the soccer park, you have a school down there. So, I think that would be high priority for the council. Another thing, we have a street sweeper that comes out maybe once a week. Is there any way that the city can try to get it to go and do the streets? I mean, the city's looking a lot better. I know it's being homeless. We kicked this stuff out into the road because the street sweeper's going to take it and suck it up. So, if we could get the street sweeper out there. I mean, I was walking around Palm Springs yesterday, and one thing that Palm Springs had that we don't have out here anymore, and that's trash cans. If you notice, all the shopping centers have, and I'm sorry, I'm just running in on this, most of the shopping centers have removed all their trash cans. I mean, why? You know, this goes back to, let's get the homeless out, the homeless are the problem. No, the homeless are trying to help clean up the city, and we don't have anywhere to throw the trash. Another thing is, when's the last time the city also had like a waste disposal for, you know, hazardous chemicals, recycling? This is all stuff that I've taken out of the thing out here in front of City Hall. One thing, our fire risers down. I know two of them on the south end, they smell like sulfur. I don't know what that's from. It's ironic that the water department was here tonight. And another thing that's really important on my side is, I know Mayor Scott, that you actually brought swag in to help out with the homeless problem. Have we gotten a report of how many people succeeded and made it through? Has the city, I mean, because it's been almost a year. They took over October 1st last year. Have we got any success stories? I've heard of a lot of people that have gone to their rehab crisis intervention and said it was the most horrid thing that ever happened to them, and they came back on an Uber or Lyft. So, a swag report, and I know, God, like six months ago, you guys did the drone wars. Something at a Palm Springs festival, you guys were part of a drone wars thing. Do you remember any of the rules on drones, whether they have to stay illuminated, or, and I know you probably can't comment on that, but those are just a few things. Let's finish cleaning up the city. You know, the homeless seem to be gone out of the, I am a homeless, by the way. Don't seem to be on the main drag where everybody can see them. You know, we had a situation just last weekend, and Jeff's no longer visible. So, thank you guys for your time, and I hope we can look into all this, especially the stoplight. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, and we'll see what we can answer for you. Dottie Wilder.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dottie Wilder. So, I thought about doing this before, and it's probably not anything anybody can answer, but I want to express my frustration with living in a community here within a community, which is a mobile home park. Although, when I bought in there, it said it was a common interest development. And I've talked to several on your staff who are trying to be very helpful, but apparently there's not a single piece of paper from when the developer subdivided in 2001. And what I read is it was part of the Desert Hot Springs revitalization project. So, anyway, so up until two years ago, last February, I never heard anybody in charge of the place, or the property management, refer to California HCD as being the oversight for the park. They would send us up to the city, they'd come to the city, they'd say, "We have nothing to do with the HOA." So, two years ago, because the utilities were left over from a trailer park when it subdivided, and they were left in the same place and not upgraded, and all my neighbors' utilities are on my property. And somebody hit the two-meter electric pedestal, and the HOA wanted to tell me it was the homeowner's responsibility. And I said, "It couldn't be," because if I hired a contractor and he damaged something to my neighbor's utilities or the infrastructure as a whole, I could be accountable for that. Anyway, it went on from there. And so, it was through there, I found out that California HCD is the one that oversees it, but they oversee mobile home parks. Because nothing, when you buy, says we're buying in a mobile home park.
Twenty-five, this is our six P M. Regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pitts?
Present.
Councilmember Pye?
Present.
Councilmember Voss?
Present.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Present.
And Mayor Mattis?
Present.
Invocations now will be given by Mayor Protem Gary Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is, this is going to be a little bit unorthodox, and I thank Councilmember Pye and the mayor for giving me the opportunity and to indulge me for just a moment. When I asked if I could do this, it was before the horrific shootings at the high school in Colorado and the college in Utah and before the threats at our own schools this last week. And I had wanted to say this because some of our city's staff were facing a lot of unruly and ugly threats on social media, simply for doing their job in a way that the posters disagreed with. And I was hoping to appeal, as Abraham Lincoln once said, "to the better angels of our nature." And it was, in my mind, a very appropriate thing for what our staff had undergone at the time. Sadly, it's even more relevant after what happened across our country this last week. Some of you may know, I'm originally from Utah. I was raised in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which most of you will know as the Mormons. And although I've left the church, I still find much value in some of their teachings. And the leader of their church, Russell Nelson, last week celebrated his hundred and first birthday. And in reflecting on those years lived, he said, quote, "I believe we are all children of a loving God, but no matter your religion or your spirituality, recognizing the underlying truth beneath this belief, that we all deserve dignity, is liberating. It brings emotional, mental, and spiritual equilibrium. And the more you embrace it, the more your anxiety and fear about the future will decrease. Love your neighbor. Treat them with compassion and respect. A century of experience has taught me this with certainty. Anger never persuades. Hostility never heals. And contention never leads to lasting solutions. Too much of today's public discourse, especially online, fosters envy instead of empathy." Those of us up here on the dais who are in a position of leadership need to step up and say, "Stop." I applaud and agree with the governor of Utah, Spencer Cox, who acknowledged the need to disagree better. At a press conference after the shooting up there, he said, "Our nation is broken." For those who celebrated even a little bit at the news of the shooting, and I'll add to those who now call for vengeance for anyone who disagrees with them, I would beg you, look in the mirror and see if you can still find that better angel somewhere in there. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lacing your hand over your heart, join me in pledging to our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move to the approval of our agenda. At this time, we're going to take the consent calendar items. Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on any items that are on the consent calendars, items five through thirteen? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda and the consent calendar in whole.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Voss, second by Mayor Protem. Wait for it to come up on the screen, and then we will vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to public comment. This time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during the public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council, and she'll be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. First comment I have is Sandra Munoz.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I had everything all written out, and something took my piece of paper, and I couldn't find it. I was at a meeting a couple of years ago, and they were bringing up the stoplight that's supposed to be on Palm and Park Lane right by the public library. They were saying it was six hundred thousand. Why is it still not up there? Is that something that council can please look into before we have some fatalities down there? You've got a public library, you've got public mental health, you have the soccer park, you have a school down there. So I think that would be high priority for the council. Another thing, we have a street sweeper that comes out maybe once a week. Is there any way that the city can try to get it to go and do the streets? I mean, the city's looking a lot better. I know it's being homeless. We kicked this stuff out into the road because the street sweeper's going to take it and suck it up. So if we could get the street sweeper out there. I mean, I was walking around Palm Springs yesterday, and one thing that Palm Springs had that we don't have out here anymore, and that's trash cans. If you notice, all the shopping centers have, and I'm sorry, I'm just running in on this, most of the shopping centers have removed all their trash cans. I mean, why? You know, this goes back to, let's get the homeless out. The homeless are the problem. No, the homeless are trying to help clean up the city, and we don't have anywhere to throw the trash. Another thing is, when's the last time the city also had like a waste disposal for, you know, hazardous chemicals, recycling? This is all stuff that I've taken out of your, the thing out here in front of City Hall. One thing, our fire risers down, I know two of them on the south end, they smell like sulfur. I don't know what that's from. It's ironic that the water department was here tonight. And another thing that's really important on my, on my side is, I know Mayor Scott, that you actually brought swag in to help out with the homeless problem. Have we gotten a report of how many people succeeded and made it through, has the city, I mean, because it's been almost, almost a year. They took over October first last year. Have we got any success stories? I've heard of a lot of people that have gone to their rehab crisis intervention and said it was the most horrid thing that ever happened to them, and they came, came back on an Uber or Lyft. So, a swag report, and I know, God, like six months ago, you guys did the drone wars. Something at a Palm Springs festival, you guys were part of a drone wars thing. Do you remember any of the rules on drones, whether they have to stay illuminated, or, and I know you probably can't comment on that, but those are just a few things. Let's finish cleaning up the city. You know, the homeless seem to be gone out of the, I am a homeless, by the way. Don't seem to be on the main drag where everybody can see them. You know, we had a situation just last weekend, and Jeff's no longer visible. So, thank you guys for your time, and I hope we can look into all this, especially the stoplight. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, and we'll see what we can answer for you. Dottie Wilder.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dottie Wilder. So, I, I thought about doing this before, and it's probably not anything anybody can answer, but I want to express my frustration with living in a community here within a community, which is a mobile home park. Although, when I bought in there, it said it was a common interest development. And I've talked to several on your staff who are, tried to be very helpful, but apparently, there's not a single piece of paper from when the, the developer subdivided in two thousand one. And what I read is it was part of the Desert Hot Springs revitalization project. So, anyway, so, up until two years ago, last February, I never heard anybody in charge of the place, or the property management, refer to California H C D as being the oversight for the park. They would send us up to the city, they'd come to the city, they'd say, "We have nothing to do with the HOA." So, two years ago, because the utilities were left over from a trailer park when he subdivided, and they were left in the same place and not upgraded, and all my neighbors' utilities are on my property. And somebody hit the two-meter electric pedestal. And the HOA wanted to tell me it was the homeowner's responsibility. And I said, "It couldn't be, because if I hired a contractor and he damaged something to my neighbor's utilities or the infrastructure as a whole, I could be accountable for that." Anyway, went on from there. And so it was through there, I found out that California H C D is the one that oversees it, but they oversee mobile home parks. Because nothing, when you buy, says we're buying in a mobile home park. And, sorry about that. And, so, anyway, so, they got a violation from H C D, and the, the HOA had the general contractor come build, put two ballers in front of my garage door, build an obstruction in my driveway, without telling me what they were going to do. They came on a holiday and worked for eight hours chopping up my driveway. I did file no trespass with the police and put no trespass signs, but I'm told that it's in an HOA that they can't do anything about it. And I just want you to know how frustrating it has been. I retired after forty years working in healthcare. I didn't want to take on a new occupation and spend two years learning about real estate and what it is and what it's not. And, and it's been very frustrating. And what you said about the people that have harmed other people recently for what they say, in the HOA, they've held me up as the problem. First started with, that I asked for financial documents, were allowed by law by the day it was sterling to see, and they refused to turn them over. So they-
Dottie, I'm going to need you to wrap up your three minutes.
They, they complained to the whole community that I was the problem. And so there are people in there, I have no idea what they're capable of, that, you know, it, it is very difficult to exist. And I shouldn't have to go through this at my age to live in a house that I bought. So-
Appreciate the comments.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Is it Louis?
Yes.
And I, can you- Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Louis Tullius, and I serve on the board of the Aguadolce Homeowners Association, which is down the street next to the post office off of Two Bunch Palms. I just wanted to bring, this is also an HOA thing, I wanted to bring to the council's attention that the city's yard sale ordinance only allows individual homes to have yard sales. It doesn't include provisions for gated communities like ours. Individual sales raise some safety concerns for us because residents have to share gate codes and personal information to let people into our community. And ideally, we'd just like to have the gates open on some Saturday for three or four hours to have a community-wide sale. So we're asking for a simple revision, which is to permit community-wide yard sales in gated or multi-unit developments coordinated by the HOAs of those developments. We would manage access, signage, traffic, and events would remain limited to the same frequency as individual sales are now. Also, we plan to align these events with Desert Valley Disposal's quarterly large item pickup and partner with charities to collect unsold goods, which we feel will make this effort safe, orderly, environmentally sensitive, and also community building, which we think aligns with broader city goals. This small change would create fairness, improve safety, and bring equity to all neighborhoods of the city. And so we respectfully ask that the council direct staff to review and revise the ordinance accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Know there's speaker cards. Would anyone else like to speak in public comments and items not listed on the agenda? Just make sure you fill out a blue card when you're done and hand it to Gerald.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Marilyn Hannan. I'll bring up this statement. My husband's made a longstanding complaint that there's several intersections that are dangerous for if you're driving or riding on a motorcycle. The one right out here along Palm, the one down at Stater Brothers, the ones at Vaughn's, and then the one down off of Dillon. It may, it's kind of difficult and complicating for people who are not paying attention to a motorcyclist and for other motorists who are simply not paying attention. And his answer, although I don't necessarily agree with it, is to put roundabouts there. I'm open to just exploring the ideas of redeveloping those intersections so it's a lot safer for not only motorcycles, but bicyclists and motorists. That's it.
Thank you so much for the comments. Anyone else like to speak in public comments before we close? All right, we're going to close public comments this time. We'll go to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'm going to ask our deputy city manager, Christina Newsom, to provide a new exciting thing that we will be doing at council meetings as it relates to animal control.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to share some fantastic news about our animal adoption efforts. Thanks to our new adoption coordinator, we've been able to make great strides in finding homes for our furry friends. Since our last city council meeting, we've had four animals adopted and one animal sent to rescue, and we hosted a fun adoption event at the Las Palmas Brewery in Palm Springs. It was a wonderful opportunity to connect with the community and showcase some of our amazing dogs, Della, Titus, and Casper. Events like this not only help us find forever homes for these pups, but also allow them to socialize and meet potential adopters in a friendly setting. I'm also thrilled to introduce our pet of the week, Dylan, who's coming up the aisle now. Dylan is a lovable male Labrador Retriever who's been with us for just over a year. He's almost two years old and gets along well with other dogs. If you're interested in giving Dylan a forever home, please reach out to City Hall and ask for animal control. Dylan is here with our compliance manager, Tyler Newsom, who's ready to answer any questions you might have or help you with the adoption process. Thank you. Oh, my bad.
It's the work relationship. They just never, never separate. You're now family.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Tyler, and thank you to Dylan. Dylan is available, as Christina said, for adoption. There are many other animals as well. And that concludes our updates for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to the city council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Pitts.
All right. This is my city council update for September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. On September eighth, I attended my public safety meeting in Palm Desert at the new Sea Vag location. We covered several important topics, including ongoing investments and testing of our city's nine-one-one systems infrastructure. We also discussed the valuable relationship between Coachella Valley Cities and the C V Link program. As part of our shared public safety efforts, ensuring that first responder vehicles and community transportation services like Sunline safely clear intersections are a top priority. The C V Link program is collaborating with city partners on a pilot initiative called Roadside Unit. Indio is the first city participating in this pilot program. This innovative cellular technology can communicate with traffic signals to improve traffic safety for emergency vehicles and public buses, allowing them to cross intersections more efficiently. Essentially, it holds green lights during key intersections, enhancing travel safety. And the initial results so far on this have been actually excellent. Excellent. Next up, public safety phone app, something we didn't realize we needed, but we can't live without. So, a new app called the Emergency Vehicles was highly recommended by our first responder presenters. This app helps drivers identify approaching crosswalks and emergency vehicles nearby, encouraging heightened awareness of surroundings and promoting public safety. On September twelfth, I, along with fellow council members and our mayor, attended the annual all mayor's lunch at the Renaissance Resort in Indian Wells. This event featured delightful cuisine, valuable interactions with our other city leaders. While, while called the mayor's lunch, city council members from across the Coachella Valley also attended this amazing event. Each mayor shared insights about their city's vision and upcoming initiatives. Our Mayor Mattis highlighted exciting developments within our city, along with a forward-looking vision and momentum to advance Desert Hot Springs for a better tomorrow. On September thirteenth, my city council office for District Two launched our final newsletter for the year. It was packed with updates and economic development, Palm Drive safety initiatives, and more. This newsletter also announced a new way I will be engaging with District Two residents. I call it kitchen table discussions. We're excited to introduce this more personal, informal way of connecting. Unlike traditional town halls, and nothing wrong with town halls, we're going to continue to have those. But KDTs are small gatherings that foster open conversation among neighbors. These sessions help community members develop neighborhood watch programs and strengthen communication to enhance our safety. Please reach out to schedule your kitchen table discussion with me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my update.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess now the rule is, we should follow the bus because it'll trigger the green light rather than even try to get ahead of the bus. So, there you go. I like that. So, five new police officers. Wow, that was, that was really something. That, that does my heart good. I mean, in all the years I've been up here, to see five more, it's just amazing to see. Want to congratulate Mission Springs Water District. They won a bronze award this year in the Berkeley Springs International Water Awards. I'm not sure how many of those they've got. They must have to be building a new shelf for all of their awards, but it's a lot. Attended the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council meeting in L.A. Lots of info on planning for the two thousand twenty-eight Olympic Games, even out as far as we are. The director of venues and facilities likened it to hosting seven Super Bowls every day for the entire run, with a number of people that we're expecting in the south, Southern California area. And here in the desert, we even get to expect a lot of people staying even this far away, and we should be planning for that. Visit GPS, I know, is doing some of that now, including looking for venues for international teams to practice at. And serving on that board, I can say we've already started that process, and we've got a lot more coming in the summer months. Mosquito Control District met. This year's been a good year for the lack of mosquitoes and the disease they spread. Samples with West Nile virus are way down. St. Louis encephalitis virus is up just a tick, but not much. But all of that's been on the North Shore area of the Salton Sea, and there have been no positive samples were either found in Desert Hot Springs this year. We attended a meeting of the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, looking at our ongoing issues with illegal dumping and homeless encampments in the conservation lands. It seems like we have more than our, if it seems like we have more than our fair share here, it's because we do. Gerald, can you put up that slide real quick? We do. Look at that. All of those, the blue is illegal dump sites, the yellow are homeless encampments, and they tend to concentrate, these are all on the C V C conservation lands. We don't, they don't show the ones that are outside of the conservation lands. But if you look at where we're at, we have the most. In fact, Desert Hot Springs has thirty-six percent of the illegal encampments and trash dumping in, in the county. Unincorporated Riverside County is higher. They have about seventy percent. City of Palm Springs has ten, Cathedral City, six, Indio, five, and other cities, La Quinta, Indian Wells, Palm Desert, and Rancho have no such incidents. They have no C V C lands. Within the conservation areas, most problems occur in Thousand Palms, Upper Mission Creek, which is where you see where we're at, and Big Morongo Canyon, and Willow Hall, which is also in our area, with smaller but noticeable impacts in Edom Hill and Coachella Valley, Stormwater Channel and Delta, and Santa Rosa, Santa Sino Mountains conservation areas. But that's a very visual representation of how bad the trash is here. But we, we at C V C C, as well as our own staff, have been doing an outstanding job of cleaning stuff up, and so I'm really happy with the efforts both internally in the city and elsewhere, and we're making a lot of good progress. But there's a lot more to go. It's a very expensive process. We have some grants on the C V C C side, and hopefully, by this time next year, we will have our ranger force in, in place from C V C C, who will be out patrolling the conservation lands and making sure, and, and trying to stop that, you know, before it gets too bad. And then, along with everybody else, we also attended the Greater Coachella Valley Mayor's and Tribal Leader's Lunch. It's called the All Mayor's Tribal and Tribal Leader's Lunch. I jokingly refer to it as the all-day Mayor's and Tribal Leader's Lunch, because after every mayor and tribal leader speaks, it gets to be about two o'clock in the afternoon until we're done. But that's it. Thank you.
And when you can't find parking, they start a half hour late. Ms. Pye?
On September seventeenth, there will be a Do the Right Thing awards ceremony, and the student from Desert Hot Springs is Leon S C A G N E T T I. And he is from, she is from Cabot Yurcza Elementary School. One other thing, some of the people that are talking about HOAs and traffic should be, I would suggest that you go to public safety, because we have a public safety commission. And we can't give you answers here, but, or you can call staff on your public safety, and they can give you information regarding that. Because if we don't know, we don't know. HOA, there are certain requirements that we can't handle. And perhaps, I've been running into a lot of stuff with HOA, perhaps for public safety, we can give you the ins and outs of HOAs and why we can't do them. And lastly, I want to say, celebramos el dia de septiembre.
Easy for you to say.
You want to know what that is?
Happy Independence Day?
Yes.
Was that close?
Yes.
It's, it's Mexican Independence Day. Yes, I was going to say something else. I lost my train of thought. Mr. Ross?
Yes, sir. So, on September third, I spoke to the Friends of the Library and gave them some updates on citywide issues and some updates in District Four, and also just an opportunity to meet the council member and take some different questions. The great thing is, very interactive group. We could have probably gone on for a couple hours, you know, with our, our discussions and stuff, but it was nice. They appreciated getting the frank updates on things and kind of where we're at and what we're doing. And we have kind of a nice list of update information that I work with our assistant city manager on putting it together. And it's, we just update it when we do these things, so it works out really nice. Did that. On the fourth, went to the DVBA monthly breakfast meeting thing that they got. What's real interesting is, you know, power is such, is always an issue, right? We always talk about that. We kind of went through that when we did our cannabis stuff. And the folks back in the east end of the valley, La Quinta, Coachella, Indio, are really having a struggle with some of the power. They're approving projects, but there's no power, there's no transmission. And, you know, hearing that these are very real things, you know, they've got this big project coming in, and it's a great project, but they don't have the power yet. The transmission isn't in there, and debating who's supposed to do it, and that kind of stuff. Whereas, you know, we're always trying to, you know, we're being observant in what we have, but fortunately, this preventative method was taken care of back in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen era when we were dealing with the cultivation. We had them really front-load a lot of that out here. And so, you know, I think it's going to be a while before we are in that position, which is good, especially now that the great thing that you hear is that of all the cities in the valley, we are number one with new homes being built. And people are spending time and looking out here. So, all the more reason why to resolve some of these water issues and things, because developers are really looking at our, at our area. On the fifth, I was a guest on K News, the AM radio station, and had a good chat talk on there. Again, using the tools and kind of the information we got, we talked about some different general region issues and what have you, and, and also on housing issues and what have you. But then I was able to give some updates on Desert Hot Springs and what we're doing. And, you know, and they, we welcomed the new city manager through there as well. They asked us about that, so that was good. Let's see, on the eighth, went to the Riverside County Legal Cities Dinner Meeting in Marietta, although it was kind of rather short. We went to the Marietta Hot Spring Resorts. They can do the best they can out there, and they can say what they want, but there's not a silly darn thing about that place that's even remotely Desert Hot Springs quality. I'm sorry. You can sugarcoat it all you want at Marietta, but we are top dogs on that. You can try all you want, but it just, you could just tell. You drink the water, you could tell. You wash your hands, you could tell. Just not even try it. And so, yep, I said what I said, and I'll say it to them in person. Airport Commission Subcommittee meeting, I went on the ninth, which, the Operations Committee, they had a little bit of a fuh-pah going on over there. They've been working on the escalators, and they were using one of the escalators. They were supposed to be doing their- and they were using one of the escalators. They were supposed to be doing, replacing the escalators, which are old, which were not really equipped for the outdoor out there. So you'd get the sand and debris, and they're doing all that kind of stuff. And so they're replacing that as part of their program. Unfortunately, they went a couple weeks with no escalators, which caused quite a stirrup, because while we were replacing on the other one and doing the work for that, the one that was working broke. And so they had to try to get a lot of the people up to the second level, and they had curators and different people helping out and taking wheelchairs, up staircases, and kind of the thing. But it's all, just like as Jake said, this is all part of the bigger picture, the bigger development that they're doing there. And that includes the multimillion-dollar replacement of the escalators that they got there. So they need to do that. On the 11th, went to SEVAG Energy Sustainability Committee Meeting. We had a nice presentation from a group that includes a few cities. It's like a consortium of them that are involved in hydrogen, and how they're using hydrogen, and how they're using it for city activities and stuff. I want to do a little more research on it to see if it's something that makes sense that I can, you know, kind of push off and let our city manager's office, see if it's something that's worthwhile for us to dive into. I was intrigued, but there were some questions on how, what they're actually doing. And then, as others had stated, went to the All Valley Mayor's Tribal Leaders Luncheon, and, which Mr. Pitch, I don't know if you said this, but we went to it. As we finished that one, the Building Industry Association had their own conference there as well. And so we went over to the Building Industry Association Conference over there and met with some of the leaders of the association. And what was interesting is we got to meet a lot of the vendors that are having the updated products and things that they use in homes, and how flooring and different things have changed. So it's like the latest and greatest of what they're using now for walls and flooring and whatever else, you know, that they were doing. So it was pretty, it was right there. You walk past it, so you got to stop by, and that's what we did. That's my report.
Thank you. I want to apologize to everyone for missing the first meeting back from summer, but I was ill last time, and want to thank Mayor Potem for stepping in and handling the meeting for me. You said that's the second time you've had to do it for me.
Second time you've missed a meeting in seven years.
She did a fantastic job. I was able to watch some of it towards the end on YouTube, and you guys held yourself together without me. Thank you. I did attend a few meetings over the summer, and since we've come back from our break, Riverside County Transportation Commission has met a couple times, and Coachella Valley Association Governments Transportation Executive Committee have met. The big discussion at Riverside County Transportation is the, the maintenance of Interstate 215. Well, there's a couple of big discussions, but I wanted to bring this forth, because one of the things that have led over the last couple of years at the Coachella Valley Association of Governments and throughout the county is the maintenance of our freeway. Freeway on Interstate 10 is absolutely falling apart, and it is one of the, and I don't know, it's lack of words, ugliest freeways in the state of California for such an area that brings millions of visitors to it every year. For us to have the freeway looks this way, we've got to put pressure in the proper places. And I don't put all the blame on District 8. District 8, Caltrans, is, is our district here in Riverside County that handles the maintenance of our freeways and the cleanup. There, this is going to sound a little ridiculous, but they don't get a lot of money. It's only $300 to $400 million a year. It sounds a little ridiculous, but it costs a minimum of $2 million, $2 million a mile on a freeway to just overlay it and fix it. So it is a ridiculous amount of money, and it's only becoming more and more expensive as time goes on. They're in the, going into the fifth year of maintenance along the 215. They've done sections of that, and they're finishing it up, and there was a lot of discussion about how it was going to look and, and all that, which prompted me to bring up comments about, now that we've, we're finishing the leg from the state border through Blythe into Indio, and then we have this leg on the 215 that's finished, and they're now studying the Pass area. It's time to really look at the Coachella Valley. From Whitewater to Monterey, it's a disaster, and a lot of us drive it quite a bit. It's becoming very dangerous in certain areas, and if they don't start planning today, we don't know when we'll see that maintenance. So I'm going to continue to lead those efforts. We've got support from SEVAG, got support from Riverside County Transportation. Also, a bigger discussion at Riverside County Transportation, besides some fast-track lanes in Corona, which, that was a lot of discussion, very small stretch of it, cost very expensive, but to move traffic much easier through that area, that was a lot of discussion. But the bigger discussion about fast-tracks is that anyone that has electric vehicles will not be given the incentives anymore to drive in the fast-track, as they're going away from that because of the fact that there are so many EV vehicles out there now that it doesn't pan out to give you that opportunity, because you're just stacking more onto, into those, those lanes. So that will end, I believe, this year, if I'm correct. I forgot to read my note from that in my iPad. But I believe at the end of this year, that credit will go away, and that's statewide, and, and so you won't be able to use those lanes. You can use those lanes if you travel correctly and pay for it correctly, but you won't get the discount that you had gotten in the past. I did attend the All Valley Mayor's and Tribal Leaders Meeting that the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce puts on every year. They do a fantastic event. Unfortunately, this year, they did it at a hotel that booked two other large events, and we had to start the event a half hour late because no one could find parking. They were able to park everybody. We started a half hour late, but I did have to leave early, so I wasn't able to sit on the panel, but I did give my three-minute, you know, lobby for the city. So I learned years ago when this first started, is three minutes is not a lot of time to give a quick State of the City, and we've had members of different cities try to punch in, you know, a bunch in the three minutes, which turns into 10 minutes, which sometimes turns into 15. So I learned from my friend in La Quinta a long time ago, you just announce your State of the City and continue to remind everybody what the date is, and so I'm going to do that again today. So the State of the City for the City of Desert Hot Springs will be November 6. It'll be our Health and Wellness Center, and we have a fantastic report to give and an update of our community and what's going on by our wonderful staff here, and what they're implementing about our strategic plan and going forward. So if you, you can go on to the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce and buy a ticket for lunch, or I believe there'll be free seats on the outskirts that don't include lunch, but you can come as a community member and sit on the edge of the venue and, and listen to the State of the City if you choose. And if you can't get out or you work, it'll be broadcast on our, I think, our YouTube or on our website, again, if you want to catch the highlights. I was able to attend the Desert Hot Springs football, the very first home game, I believe it was. We have a new super, no, yeah, sup, no. Superintendent? Am I correct? I remember everybody's title. New Superintendent for Palm Springs Unified School District, Dr. Funchess, and he comes from San Bernardino, but has some ties to the Coachella Valley with people he's worked with. He lives in the Pass area, brought his wife to the first game, met him via Zoom earlier that day. We had a great conversation. I believe some of our other council members have met with him. He's got a great plan in his head on a vision that he sees for our, our school district, and we laid out some of our concerns about our schools here, and I think he's going to do a fantastic job. And that leads me into inviting everyone out for the first, hopefully annual, which I believe it will be, homecoming parade for our high school. Each school is going to have a representative of some class group, and then our high school football team and cheerleaders and, and clubs will be out on, on October 17th. I believe it's going to start in the early afternoon around 3:00-ish. It'll go from Cactus to the high school, and it's going to be a homecoming parade, the first one in Desert Hot Springs. So Principal Tenoco, and I had talked about this for the last, I think, three years, about putting this together, and we've finally been able to coordinate it, and our staff is helping us coordinate it, and it's going to be a fun, eh, probably won't be more than an hour or so. But if you can come out that day or get off work early, that'd be wonderful to see you. With that, that's all I got, but the State of the City is November 6. Gary, you got to repeat it with me.
November 6.
I put Gary to sleep, so, but he didn't have to work tonight very hard, so. Awesome. Thank you very much. We're going to move to the administrative calendar. Item number one, lease agreement for special events in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morris?
Yes. Over the past several years, there has been renewed focus and energy towards the development of the Downtown Arts and Culture District in the city. Just to name a few, in 2022, there was a Downtown Steering, Steering Committee comprised of residents and business owners that met on several occasions and discussed events and concepts that could bring life into the downtown. In that same year, a downtown study conducted for the city by students of Cal Poly found that arts and events in the downtown ranked highly favorable amongst our residents. In 2023, the city council authorized the creation of a unique art installation by artist Travis Young, where an entire building located apartment, Pearson, had the mural installed, and we held an annual unveiling event. In 2023, the city also began Friday nights on Pearson, which was a weekly food truck series directly on Pearson Boulevard. In 2024, city council also authorized the creation of a mural program that included 12 murals in the Downtown Arts and Culture District from various renowned artists such as Shepard Ferry, Push, and Cryptic. In July of 2025, city council authorized the professional services agreement with the mural supply company for the Phase 2, curation of the Phase 2 mural program, which is currently underway. The city has hosted various events in the city's downtown district. The events bring community together through shared activities such as food, music, entertainment, and experiences. In order to expand on those events, the city is planning on hosting a monthly, hosting monthly special events at a temporary special event location. The special events will be located on six vacant lots on the north side of Pearson Boulevard between Cactus Drive and West Drive. The vacant lots will be improved ground cover to provide an area for a music stage, food trucks, vendors, and public to enjoy. In order to accommodate these special events, the city identified four and two adjacent lots with the same property owner that were centrally located and easily accessible to the public and the surrounding local businesses. This in front of you is the land lease agreement between the city and the property owner of those six lots. And the highlighted terms of the agreement are listed as a total of six individual parcels. The six parcels would be, are vacant and will be leased as is and returned as is. The lease would be for a 12-month term, starting September 16, 2025, to go through September 15, 2026, with an option to extend, with negotiated terms. The cost of the lease is $1,500 per month of rent, and there is 30-day notice that the city is required to give to a property owner for termination. Attached, you will find the draft lease agreement and exhibit showing the exact location and some pictures of the sites themselves. This staff, staff report in front of you is actually going with city strategic plan goal number three of revitalizing our downtown district. That concludes my staff report, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. This is exciting stuff. Do we have any public comments? Start over here. Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Will we have, will we be cognizant of our noise ordinance?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments over here? All right, entertaining motion.
I will, we adopt the, 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 the.
I'll second. Motion by Mayor Potem, second by Councilmember Voss. No further comments. Please vote.
I'll just press move.
You need to change your screen.
There's a blue dot on mine.
Yeah, I've got mine up on there. Sorry, I have some technical difficulties. Here it comes. Nope, still didn't come up with any buttons. Oh, there they are.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is an ordinance amending Chapter 1.10, City Seal and Insignia of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. Mr. Suriano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So the city's official seal and logos are used by the city for official purposes. Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 1.10, reflects the official city seal and logos that are currently in use, ensures that the current and previous official city seal and logos are used only for purposes directly related to the official business of the city of Desert Hot Springs, and prohibits unauthorized use of the current and previous seal and logo to prevent fraud, deception, misrepresentation, and/or abuse. The proposed ordinance before you simply revises Exhibit B to incorporate the latest representations of the city logos following the city's updated branding strategy. There are no language modifications being proposed to DHS MC Chapter 1.10. With that, staff's recommendation is to introduce her first reading and read by Tato only, an ordinance of the city council, amending Chapter 1.10, City Seals and Insignias of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code.
Do we have any public comments on this item? See, nobody can be forth closed, public, public comments. Do I have any comments on this side?
Oh, I move we adopt the, the pending ordinance for the city seal and insignias and changes.
Do we have a second?
I'll do a second, and can you show what we see, the difference, what we're adding? Thank you.
I have a motion and a second motion by Mayor Potem, second by Councilmember Pye. Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance will return on October 7th for a second reading and adoption.
Item number three is an ordinance adding Chapter 15.06 to Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, to require contractors with large construction projects to register job sites as suboutlets with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes, thank you, member and councilmembers. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration allows for sales tax from construction contracts to be allocated to local jurisdictions where the construction job site is located. The contract or subcontract must be $5 million or more, and the contractor or subcontractor must have a seller's permit with a CDTFA. This ordinance before you would require that all large, all construction projects with contracts of over $5 million would be, require them to register with the CDTFA, register the job site here in the city as a subpermit, and whereas any sales tax through that would then come to the city instead of going to the county pool.
Do we have any public comments on this item? See, nobody can be forth. We'll close public comments, and I'll start over here. Any public, any comments? Comments?
Just one question, Jeffrey. Do you have a projection of the revenue that would possibly come in on that?
No, I mean, it just depends on, so the value is, it's not dependent on the actual construction project itself, but it's dependent on the contracts within that, within that construction project. So it, without knowing what specific contracts each construction project would have, I just, the cat may, can't make a, make a guess.
Well, every little dollar helps.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Voss, second by Mayor Potem. No further comments. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city council adding Chapter 15.06 to Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, to require contractors with large construction projects to register job sites as suboutlets with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. The ordinance will return on October 7th for a second reading and adoption.
Item number four of our administrative calendar is SB 341, Housing Successor Agency Annual Report for the period of fiscal year 2013 through 2014 through fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes, thank you. So the SB 341 Housing Successor Agency Annual Report is a report that details the activities of the Housing Successor Agency to the former redevelopment agency's 20% set aside for affordable housing. This report summarizes the activities and establishes compliance that the former RDA's housing assets were spent in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 3416F. The DHS Housing Authority became the Housing Successor Agency in February 2012 and received all the housing assets from the former RDA. Over this period of the report, the, the Housing Authority was in compliance with the, with the section code, Health and Safety Section Code 34176F, as it had not built up an excess surplus and has spent, and it was spent in, within the limitations for administrative services costs. The one issue we have, the expenditures going towards housing. services costs. The one issue we have, the expenditures going towards housing, we were not compliant with the requirement that at least thirty percent of, I'm sorry, at least, yes, at least thirty percent of the housing development costs needs to go towards housing to benefit housing or families with, that are at thirty percent, who earn less than thirty percent of the annual median income. So to rectify that and future expenses, fifty percent of our future expenses will have to go toward, you'll have to benefit that group directly. Once this report is approved, it will be sent to HCD and posted to the city's website. This actually satisfies, this and actually, and the last item satisfies Goal Number Eleven, our strategic plan, the financing operations.
Any public comments on this item? See, nobody coming forth. We'll close public comments. Any questions? Comments? Is there a motion?
I will read the housing successor agency annual report.
Second.
There's a motion by Mayor Potem, seconded by Councilmember Pye. Thank you very much. We did not have any public hearings tonight. Is there anyone that didn't speak at the beginning of the meeting that would like to speak now? Any public comments? See, nobody coming forth. The next city council meeting will be on October seventh, so we have a couple of weeks off. Public Safety Commission will then meet on October ninth, and the Planning Commission on October fourteenth. Before we adjourn, as in the spirit of what Mr. Gardner had talked about, our freedoms are our freedoms, and we live in this country so that we can have those freedoms. Whether you believe or not believe in what someone's saying doesn't mean you take their life. Doesn't mean that you do the things that will cause harm to others. I hope that you understand that we all believe what you said, and I hope you all believe what I'm saying today. Be kind to one another. We are adjourned.